Good God, thank you for allowing us to come together this evening. Help us to be respectful of one another. Help us to be wise in our decision making. Thank you for all the things that we are going to accomplish this evening. Thank you for the city. Help us to get through what has been an eventful weekend. Help us to come together. Help us to be better. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge.
Letting be just as glad of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, and to honor God, and to be faithful, and deliver to justice for all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWerkin.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brazington. Do I have him on line? Thank you. Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have before you the minutes of June 13th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections or changes. I don't see any, so thank you very much. They are so approved. We have no one who signed up to speak to us tonight, surprisingly enough.
May I hold one moment here? I've gotten a notice, Mike. He is on, okay, Councilmember Brazington is on the call.
Oh, Councilman Will Brazington is on the line for us. We have some very exciting special presentations tonight and begins with item 8A.
A resolution to appoint Lee B. Pauletta as city attorney.
That's a move.
Check.
Motion in many, many seconds. Lee, will you come forward? I think that's, do it at this time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Judge Ned Miller will deliver the oath of office to Lee Pauletta. We're so thrilled to have her family with us tonight and her many friends. Thank you. Got you all set up.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States.
To preserve, to protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States.
Congratulations. So help me God.
So help me God.
Get a few more pictures? Sure, ma'am, yeah. Ma'am, you're the one in trouble, you're the one in trouble now.
Lee, before you do, mayor, do we need a consultant? We need a, we got a motion in a second.
We need actual vote.
But we need an actual vote.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Before she talks, mayor, I would just like to say, I've been on council for 40 years. I've waited for you for 40 years. Forty years, et cetera. Our first female.
And Lillian, I also commented that during our previous meeting, I looked over and she had the Bible and Robert's Rules of Order. And let's start at the bottom.
So. Women of the church.
Yes, sir. Start at the bottom and move up from there. I know that we have a full agenda, but I doubt that I will ever get the opportunity to acknowledge some of the people that I need to in a public meeting ever again. So I'm just gonna have to take up a little bit of time and then I promise.
You got it, you got the floor.
I have a lot of friends and mentors here who are here tonight, aside from Judge Miller, who's done me a great honor of coming and swearing me in. I went to work for Judge Miller and Pat Pascal, who's here when I was 19 years old and a student at Furman. It was his first law clerk 20 years ago this year, so it's really special to me for both of them to be here and Pat's wife, Kim. They raised me once I left my family's home and came over here to Furman. Most of the lawyers that are here supporting me and who I have grown up with are criminal lawyers. And with the exception of Lee Plumlee, who thankfully came, he's the straight man of the bunch and keeps us, keeps us all in line. I have former deputy solicitor Betty Strom is here, who's our current city prosecutor. Former prosecutor Mindy Hervey, who's now the circuit, chief circuit public defender is here. I have two very dear friends in Chris Hodge and Kristi Sustakovich. The three of us worked together for 15 years prosecuting violent crimes and crimes against children in Greenville County. Chris is with Clemson now and Kristi is still in solicitor's office doing absolutely amazing work keeping children in Greenville safe. It is only because I got to grow up with these people. Lucas Marchant in the solicitor's office, we just had the benefit of being trained by Betty and Bob Ariel. And their philosophy was that as a prosecutor, you have a quasi judicial role, which means that you have a higher ethical standard than any other lawyer. And they took it very seriously. And the message was that you were to do the right thing, no matter what, no matter how popular or unpopular it might be. And that has certainly served me very well. I have friends from law school who, without them, I would not be here, who have dialed in. This may be the most remote attendance, like I don't know how to describe it, but from all over because my family's all scattered through Georgia. So I think we have Scaly Mountain, North Carolina, my friends Brett and Shelley are listening in. My roommate from law school, Elizabeth Bowling, is either in Tullahoma, Tennessee, or Nashville. And then Brian Lee is in Atlanta. I just was raised by exceptional lawyers and I'm so thankful for that, but more than that, they're exceptional people and really honored that they are, they're here tonight. You've made my family super, super proud. They are scattered throughout Georgia. Anything praiseworthy that you ever see about me is because of my parents, Bill and Jackie Booth. They are vacationing at the beach by themselves, which is what you get to do when you're retired. And so wouldn't consider asking them to come back from that, but could talk for hours about what they have done to, to shape me and mold me. But practically speaking, the most important thing they did for me to put me here, literally here, is that they didn't make me come home from Furman after my GPA came in after freshman year. They let me stay. Otherwise, I might be speaking to city council in Athens, Georgia, maybe, I don't know. But practically speaking, they did me that great favor. And so I've had just the tremendous blessing of being able to make Greenville my home because they, they let me stay back in 1993. Daddy said I can quit apologizing for that now, so thank you very much for that. I don't have to apologize for the GPA any longer. My sisters, Annie and Kate, are my best friends. They're on-call parenting consultants, unlicensed therapists, and I would have folded up the tent a long time ago if it were not for those two. When you were watching me being sworn in, you got to see a picture of how my family works. And that's with my husband Ashton standing beside me, not in front of me and not behind me, with the Bible in his hand and our children on either, on either side. I'm super proud that they could be here today and sharing this. Anna Davis is 12. She got my grandmother's math gene, which gets a generation, apparently, and she's very wise for her age. I suspect that you will see her again in some capacity. Henry's very quick witted. He's sneaker head. Comes up with awesome, original jokes. He'll either be a comedian and that you'll see HBO specials on, or he'll retire at 40 after an extremely lucrative sales career. You might presume that either I or his dad are his favorite people in the room tonight, but you'd be wrong about that. It's Chief Howie Thompson. And maybe if we can get out of the room with Chief Thompson, we would be the favorite, but until then, it's Howie. And then Ashton, who's just our glue and our gentle leader, and it was his encouragement that allowed me to convince myself that I could actually serve y'all in this way, and I'm really thankful for that. I shared some of this with Councilmember Dow earlier this week, and I, I do think that it is a momentous occasion that, that I'm being allowed to serve as the first woman in the role of city attorney for Greenville. And I'm very thankful for that opportunity. My grandmother was born in 1924 in Commerce, Georgia. She went to Agnes Scott College. She was a math major. And when she graduated, she went to work for NASA with the computers like you saw in the movie Hidden Figures. She was really, really brilliant. She was ahead of her time in ways that I didn't fully understand until frankly after she was gone. But when her fellow Agnes Scott alumni, alumnae, Jean Toll was appointed chief justice of the Supreme Court, she was beside herself and was just very encouraged to know that her granddaughter was going to be practicing in a, in a state where that would even be possible, where that would happen. So after she was finished with her work in NASA, she was getting ready to kind of try to move back closer to home in Commerce. And she was actually the director of Sunday School at First Presbyterian Church here in Greenville. So my grandmother actually got to live here in Greenville in the 1940s, and I wish I knew more about her time here. I didn't ask her about it before she died, but I just wonder what it looked like to her when she was here. And I know that if she got the opportunity to see it now, she would love it. She would really love it. I also know that she would be beyond proud of me, but also proud of y'all for allowing her granddaughter to be a first in the way that you have. So thank you. I know we have a lot of work to do. So, Mr. Mayor, counsel, and Mr. City Manager, let's go to work.
Thank you very much. We go, we will go right back to work. Got some memos sitting on your desk that today I know about, so. Yeah, thank you very much. Great to have the family and all the friends here tonight. Really great honor to everyone here, so thank you, Lee.
It is, thank you. I also told them that they could all leave when this was over, so.
Ah, well, you know. Let's switch this around a little bit. The next presentation, let's switch to HC first because we have a number of folks here for that special ceremony for HC, the Juneteenth essay contest winner. The family is here and friends are there too, and Lilly and Brock Fleming has the announcement to make.
First of all, I thank all of you for being here tonight, particularly those of you who are visiting for our Juneteenth announcement. We're excited to announce that the winner of the city's inaugural Juneteenth essay contest is Mr. Justin Jackson. He is a Greenville High School graduate and will be attending South Carolina State University this fall. Justin, could you please stand for just a moment? Justin had the opportunity to submit an original essay answering a select prompt centering on the meaning and/or the impact of Juneteenth. As the winner of the contest, Justin's will receive a scholarship provided by the Greenville County Section of the National Council of Negro Women and the Greenville NACP. We are very proud that Justin is here, and we have members from the National Council of Negro Women here. I think there were a couple, and we have a couple of members, executive members from the NACP. If you please stand as well. Diane, et cetera. Thank you. We also have members of his family, but Justin is going to read to you this beautiful essay. Now, yes, he is a football player. He is a great football player. Would you believe, they wanted him for playing football, but Justin has a lot more going on for him than that. Okay, Diane, you want to show off the money. Um, Scott, so Justin, if you could please come up? And he's going to read his essay.
And then after that, you can come forward with the money. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Justin. Good to have you with us.
Good afternoon. Today's topic question is why is Juneteenth important today? The question you should ask yourself is, what is Juneteenth? Juneteenth is a celebration of the emancipation of enslaved Africans that originated in Galveston, Texas in 1865. Congress passed federal law in June of 2021 to make it a federal holiday. However, African Americans have been celebrating Juneteenth since its inception. In this essay, the reason will be explained as to why it is significant in the African American culture. My three contentions are to educate the children, remember the past, and progress to the future. The typical age of an African American child, when they come to realize how unjust African Americans have been treated since the first Africans were brought to Jamestown, Virginia in 1619, is around the third grade. In social studies class, the definition of slavery has been whitewashed, which proceeds to make enslavement of African Americans not sound as bad as it truly was. This leaves a child with the unrealistic view of life as an enslaved African. In order for African American children to understand the brutality, brutality of slavery, it is the responsibility of the African American community to ensure the realistic view of being taught to our children. The African American community not only relies on information in the history books, but we also rely on the family history that has been passed down through generations. The archives can be a great source of information that can provide a full picture of the day-to-day life of an enslaved African. This leads me to explain why remembering the past is so vital. Remembering the past is a vital part of this holiday, is important to this holiday is today. As African Americans in today's society, we have to know and understand how we got to where we are. Understanding our past gives us insights of how far we have come and how far we need to go. Understanding our past provides us with a clear timeline for the fight for freedom and equality. The freedoms that were, that we have today came at a tremendous price for our ancestors. Juneteenth helps us remember and celebrate the heroes who did brave and amazing things to pave the way for freedom and equality. It is a celebration commemorating how we came together and survived, worked, bled, and just for the opportunity to be free. But remembering the past always helps you control your destiny in the future. As we progress to the future, we have to continue to celebrate this holiday. We must make America and the world see the significance of Juneteenth because our lives matter just as anyone else's. Our ancestors survived a life full of trials and tribulations so that we will be able to reap the rewards and the sacrifices. God Almighty looked down upon the world and granted what seem to be people worth less than anything with a spirit to endure, survive, and persevere. As a young African American man transitioning into adulthood, it fills me with such great pride to celebrate and understand the significance of Juneteenth. I would like to leave you all with a poem by Harriet, quote by Harriet Tubman. Every great dream begins with a dreamer. Always remember, you have within you the strength, the passion, and the patience to reach the spot of stars and change the world. Thank you.
There they come. There they come. Yeah, his parents are back in the back of the room. Here comes Sandy. Come on back, come forward also. Sandy, keep your hands off that check. A special night it is. We always enjoy this when we congratulate our annual, our retirees. This is an annual event for us, of course. We have a number of folks who have retired from the city of Greenville. We have some who are not with us tonight. We have others who are here, though we very much appreciate this. I always like to get this number. The total combined years of service of those who are retiring tonight, leaving the city of Greenville, is 834 years. I want to look that up. It's truly a wonder we'll get anything done tomorrow around here, but we'd like to ask our special guests to come forward, receive a little, little package from the city of Greenville, and we thank you again for your years of service in making the city of Greenville what it is, which is the people. So thank you for being here. From the fire department, Jean Belzer. Come on, come on forward. Thank you. 20 years and 10 months.
Thank you.
Saw even that list, I thought, oh, no. Samuel Stubbs, 35 years. Thank you very much. Come on, stand back here. Claude Turner, 32 years and two months. Let's see, next department, we have, oh, from Parks and Recreation, Jan Cox, 30? I think she probably could have retired long ago, Jan, but we didn't let you, so, you know, 33 years. And Joe, we have a reader? 11 years. If you heard 33 years, that is just like yesterday, right? Thank you. Here are you, here are you. Thank you. Congratulations. Two from our police department, Silver Cleveland Ballinger, 25 years and three months. Police Administration. Wanda Odell, 29 years and three months. From Public Transportation, Luther Van Hook, four years and three months.
Rolling on.
Ten years altogether? 10 years before is a bust, just joined us in four years. Yeah, 14 years altogether? Yeah. Very good to know that. I wondered about that. Let's see, Public Works, a lot of folks, but most of them aren't here tonight. Want you to notice the retiree attire. It's a different look. Richard McClure, 28 years and six months. Timothy Walker, 28 years and five months. Oh, good, she came back for it tonight. Cynthia Wright, 16 years and one month.
Cynthia, she came back.
Yeah. This is classic case of who's answering the phone? I mean, who's doing it? You know, I appreciate it, thank you.
Got it?
I didn't think whatever she does with that. All right, thank you all.
A little bit off agenda, but I just want to recognize a visitor we have today, and I hope I'm not going to embarrass you too badly. But Gabriel Kinsey is here, and Gabriel is a senior at Christ Church, correct? And is going after his merit badge and for an Eagle Scout and happens to be the son of Allen, Reverend Dr. Allen Kinsey, who he and I were at Greenville High together, date not to be disclosed. But, but welcome and and with all the joy, it's really nice to be at a council meeting with great joy, with retirements and Lee, and this is the way things work, Gabriel. So thank you for being with us.
There's I. We have another special presentation night. Lorraine is here. Yeah, hey, Lorraine. Saw you down there earlier.
So I'm not quite certain how to segue.
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to segue, but we do appreciate our partnership with.
But gosh, what a lot to celebrate. And, you know, United Housing Connections has a lot to celebrate as well. We celebrate being a part of this community. We celebrate being a part of problem-solving and solutions-based answers to very, very complicated questions. And so tonight, we're going to talk just a little bit about some programming. I know that many folks have, we've, we've had some concern, this city is growing, and it is growing in a beautiful way. I don't know anybody that doesn't like to come downtown and take a stroll. And that also includes our friends who are experiencing homelessness. They like, they love our city. They feel protected and they feel, they feel uplifted when, when they are a part of what we're doing. And so we, as a community, owe a debt of service to try and uplift those folks and make them even a greater part of what we do. And so to that end, let's just talk a little bit about where we stand by the numbers in terms of homelessness. And these numbers come from our HMIS, which is our Homeless Management Information System. It's our coordinated entry system that literally chronicles folks who are coming into our system, who are experiencing literal homelessness. And so as you can see, in Greenville County, out of all of the thirteen counties that the continuum of care serves, Greenville County holds the largest number of citizens experiencing homelessness. Now, you'll see over that the female sec, over in reported gender, in that system, a hundred and ninety-five males, two hundred and forty-seven females. I will say that it is not individual females that we look at, but those who are in households, single-parent women who are head of household. And so there are many different solutions for that group, but there are also several females, I would say at least nine of, or at least one in ten females that we serve are chronically homeless and are living on the streets. When we talk about addressing homelessness in Greenville, we talk about barriers to housing. And so here are some of the things that we are facing, that are, that our citizens are facing. Women with children, even with income, can't afford housing. Low-wage earners, fixed-income folks move from hotel stays to sleeping in the streets. I'm not sure if people are aware of that, that a lot of people will take their, their fixed income and stay a couple of weeks in a hotel. They'll run out of money, and then they'll be literally living in their car on the street for the balance of the month. And that just continues to happen. Service workers, they're employed but can't find affordable housing. You'll see a lot of our service workers who are in shelter. You'll see a lot who are not in shelter, who are in encampments or sleeping on our streets. Many refuse to go to shelter due to some requirements like sobriety and rigid rules. There are strict curfews, and there's required program participation. So some folks just don't fit that model, and so they don't want to participate. Criminal records is another, another barrier, reentry without housing or support services. We have a lot of folks coming out of incarceration, and you'll see, I serve on the interagency council, South Carolina Interagency Council as vice chair. And you'll see us compile a report of just the number of people who are coming out of the criminal justice system who are unstably housed. And you'll see that in August. So addressing homelessness in Greenville, we are looking at United Housing Connections at a four-pillar approach to that. We know that one direction and one answer and one, one arrow shot in the dark is not gonna, not gonna cure the ails that we are facing when it comes to people who are unstably housed. So our four pillars are creating a homeless task force, which we've done, and we'll talk about in just a second. Creating an outreach program. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, for allowing us to, for providing some funding and allowing us to build an outreach program that's dedicated every day to outreach. The panhandling program is also something that I'll, I'll share with you guys tonight. And then the last pillar is our day shelter option, which is critical to our success. Please feel free to stop me if you have questions at any time. So the pillar one is our homeless task force. Several months ago, we went to the emergency merchants' associations meeting, and through the help of the city staff, Will and others, we real, we reached out to all of our business owners downtown, some of our residents, the city staff attends, PD attends, and we created a homeless task force meeting. It meets via Zoom on Monday at eight-thirty, second Monday of every month. And if, by the way, anyone would like to join, you can email outreach@uhcs.org to join. But the purpose of that meeting is to learn about the ways, learn about the work and positive ways to help, to share concerns with the task force and the outreach team, and then help provide resources and find out how your support's making a difference. One of the things we concentrate on at the task force is education. People are aware of homelessness, but they absolutely have no idea what to do about it, particularly our folks that were, who are downtown. So some of the things that we do when we talk about education, we first answer the question, is homelessness a crime? Homelessness, a myth is that homelessness is against the law. Another myth, panhandling is against the law. Another is standing, sitting, sleeping on public property against the law. None of those are true. And so it's, it's sometimes enlightening to help folks understand that, that, you know, homelessness and being in a public place is not criminal. So we also educate on when to call our police officers or our police department. When you're concerned for your safety, when you're concerned for the safety of others, when someone is creating a disturbance, when some, someone is trespassing and refusing to leave on private property, when you witness illegal activity, or if there appears to be a medical emergency, all of those are absolute calls to law enforcement, nine-one-one for assistance. And so when do we call outreach at UHC? When someone's experiencing homelessness and asks you for help, it's always great to send an email to outreach@uhcs.org and let us know two things. The last non-location, you saw this person, and the description of the person, including their clothing and any unique identifiers. I will tell you that ninety, ninety percent of the, of the emails and phone calls I get, they say, do you know the man that stands on, on, on the west end corner with the blue hat? I need a little more than that. So if you could take a picture, you know, without, you know, violating people's rights, if you could take a picture and send that, that would be helpful. But ninety percent of the people that I get calls about, we know them. They're in our system. I can generally tell you the backstory. And then in, in terms of the task force, it would really help us if we could get, we come to the merchants' meetings every quarter and give a report to the, to the downtown merchants' association. It would be helpful if many, many more businesses would be, would be involved so that we can help educate. So any of you who can help us get that word out, I would appreciate. Did you have a question? That, that's all right. That's okay. And so we'll move on. We'll move on to outreach, which is our pillar, our second pillar in the program. So some of you may be interested to know that it takes five or seven interactions before most of our folks will, will trust enough to accept support or help. So that's a long game. And so Chris is here. He is our, many of you probably already know Chris. He is our lead peer support specialist. And, you know, we are here to provide a hand up and connection to housing. And so what that looks like, guys, is we, our group, our team, they come alongside people and say, you know, I don't have anything for you. I can't fix your problem, but I can walk beside you, and we can walk towards services, and I can help point you in the right direction, and I will be here every single day until we get it done. What we don't do is try to make people be like us. Does that make sense? Because my solution in my life is not their solution or their life. So it's very important for us to provide dignity to these people and the opportunity to make their own choice to move forward. And so we want to be there to hold them as they do that and help them. Make sense? Chris, anything that I left out there? So to that end, our outreach interactions, and this is just for the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, look at the client interactions. Chris and the team, just in a quarter, three hundred and ninety-five touches. Clients moved from shelter, from the streets to shelter, thirty-nine, just in that three month period of time. Clients moved from the street to treatment, eighteen. Clients connected and engaged in services from outreach, eighty-nine. Clients connected to permanent housing, seven. Clients connected to the thirty-sixty-ninety-day program, which is our treatment program for folks who would like to come off the street and come into either mental health or, or substance abuse treatment. And then clients who have graduated, we had six clients graduate in May. So the outreach works. It does connect people, and it does change lives. So thank you very much for your support as a city in making that happen. And then the new initiative that we're working on with the cities, a matter of fact, I think we're going to meet about some additional marketing collateral on Wednesday. You have in front of you, all of you, the Keep Your Change to Be the Change information. I didn't give you this. I, I killed a lot of trees, guys, just want to tell you, to give you all of these printed materials, but, you know, forgive me for that. But the, this is the poster that is, has been offered to every merchant downtown. The program is Keep Your Change to Be the Change, and it says, your gifts provide those living on our streets with connections to local services and stable housing. There's a better way to help panhandlers. And then down this side are all the support services that we have in and around the city so that even those who are experiencing homelessness, if they don't have this information, it's right there for them. It can also be pointed to by the merchants. And so the QR code goes directly to the, a dedicated fund that is strictly supports outreach services. And so it will, it will support the work of the Coffee Club as well as our outreach and any efforts that we have to meet the needs of those experiencing homelessness on the street. We also have this small flyer to go on the side of, merchants can lay them on their counters or hand them out. We'll also be doing some, some canvassing with these flyers downtown. But what this says is, what can I give other than money? So it talks about giving bottled water and granola bars, keeping those handy. Talks about giving gift cards, five-dollar gift cards to local restaurants, but also sharing this flyer with list of local services. Some people do keep toiletries in a little bag if, if they're so inclined and, and they feel that that is part of their life's works to help, then keeping a bag of things in their car, like toiletries and food and that kind of thing. But we do discourage, you know, while we can't tell people not to give money, we certainly would not tell people what to do personally. What we're asking is, please, please, help us make a change long-term. That little short-term, two or three dollars could sort of feeds that perpetual being on the street. Does that make sense? And so if we can provide something that is not that, that is long-term housing, that's certainly a, a much better answer. And then we also have these table tents, and I think I gave you all one, but these are just to sit on merchant counters as well. So you'll also see us partner with the communications department at the city to create some videos for the visitor center from, for some of our hotels. We're going to talk about outreach and interview Chris, and we'll talk about, interview some of our folks who are experiencing homelessness and, and what we're doing to support them. And so the purpose of those videos are to enlighten the public on outreach and what we're doing to literally support people long-term. Questions about the panhandling program?
Thank you very much. Good to have Chris with us tonight, too, and we appreciate the hard work you do, the one-on-one work that's done all the time, and special attention to downtown. I hope council knows, again, when you get letters, emails, or someone, you see something, there, that's where you send it, and they do such a great job of following up. We appreciate that very much. Thank you, Lorraine.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, well, not a question. I, as a reminder to council, but I think it's something we can remind our businesses, that the legislature this year passed an income tax credit equal to three thousand dollars per employer who hires a formerly incarcerated individual. So I think that that might be a good message that the city can send out to their employers, maybe work with the chamber, maybe work with our downtown folks, that that tax credit is available and important and might actually play a very small piece in what we're trying to do here and what you're trying to do.
It's a, it's a great, it's a great point. And, you know, I will say that the city, as well as the water company and several other employers have reached out to us to say, can, can we help employer folks? And I'm happy to say that they, we have three or four employees, or three or four clients that are employed with businesses within the city and, you know, with some of our merchants. So it's a great, it's a great thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to the last pillar is our day shelter option. And so one of the things that we know is that we have nowhere for, as much as we are in the streets connecting to people, there's nowhere to take folks. We have a lot of services that are open periodically, sporadically. I tell you that Place of Hope does an absolute fabulous job with United Ministries, but they are limited. They are, they can only, they're only open three hours a day, Monday through Thursday. And they, frankly, their model doesn't support long-term places for people to come and just be, to drink coffee, to even take a nap or shower long-term, or that they just connect to services, that three-hour window is what they have, which is fantastic. But if we're going to really do something that we, that will affect the people that are walking and sleeping and living on our city streets, we're going to have, we're going to have to put money toward this effort. It's just the bottom line. We can't make people go anywhere unless there's somewhere for them to go. So how we in the police department can walk up and say, if they're not doing anything, if they're on public space, it doesn't matter how many are there even. So if we're going to really affect how we can move people from being on the street into services, we're going to have to consider this option. Low-barrier shelter is a place to gather off the streets. It provides food, showers, laundry, storage, address. Many people can't get a job without an address, access to support services like mental, physical health treatment, and just a safe place to rest without fear. You may be, you may not understand why many of the folks that we see gather here in the city. They do that for two reasons. One, it's absolutely safe. It's policed, so they know that they can sleep. It's also very well-lit, and it's beautiful. It's also very well-lit, and it's beautiful. So, for the very same reasons that we all love downtown, so do they. So, it's just reality. So we are here, United Housing Connections is here to help assist. We will do whatever we can. Our job is to love these people and to try to get them connected. It's very much, it's very much tough love, but it is love nonetheless. We want people to feel empowered to move forward and be successful. So we just talked about some of the reasons why. Current shelters don't allow for daytime stays. Many roam the streets at night, especially women. Do you know that most of our women roam the streets and sleep during the day? It's safer that way. City streets are crowded. Again, the police is there, safer than encampments. The only place they have to bathe, folks, is the public restrooms. That's where they go. So a day's shelter will alleviate that issue. No place to store belongings, that's why you see a lot of things stored, thrown about. And then we did talk about IDs. What's it going to cost? Well, it's going to cost a little bit. We've been looking at some spots that would be accommodating, and close enough to the city, but again, in a spot where we feel good about giving services. I really am not at a place where I can say publicly, because I've not made any of those, any of those contractually, or I don't have anything under contract or anything like that, so I wouldn't make those statements. But it's going to cost us about $800,000 if this property that we consider is purchased. To outfit that property, it'll be somewhere between $300,000 and $600,000. We're looking at, we've got someone coming in looking to give us an estimate for what those outfits will cost. And then operating is about $800,000 a year. Security is a big issue. We want to make sure that we are providing a safe environment, particularly if it's low barrier. We need to make sure that we have people who are, who are there, who can help us make sure everyone remains safe.
Lorraine, how many beds is that?
Well, it just depends. It depends on what this outfit looks like. We're hoping somewhere around a dozen in the beginning. You know, we've looked at places that are 20,000 square feet to, down to 3,000 square feet, just to figure out what's, you know, what are the possibilities? I would not, we're going to start relatively small. We're going to start with a dozen, maybe 18 beds. But, you know, any larger than that, we've got to figure out how to manage it. We've been a couple of places, looking at different options. There's a great option, as a matter of fact, some of the city staff with me, went with me. There's a great option called Opportunity Hub in Spartanburg. It's outstanding. They do, Hoyt and his team do a fabulous job. And I guess they serve probably 125, 130 people every day. They also have their shelter open at night. So they, they probably, there's probably 80 folks, including women, that stay at night in the shelter as well. So.
I want to ask a question. So, if this is something that you recommend for the City Aggregable, like everything else, over the years, we've fed the homeless. People will come from every place else, other than the people in the particular area. And, because we know that our state agencies used to give one-way tickets to the City Aggregable. So, I mean, but we have got another 430,000 people in the county agreement, and they have as much homelessness. To me, homelessness has to be addressed as a unified force, because homeless people are like water. It doesn't matter about where you live. So if we put something here, it wouldn't just be for the City of Greenville, it would cover some more people, and it wouldn't be able to suffice, to actually fund something like that. But if it's a collaborative effort of the county, including Simpsonville, Travel Dress, all the other six cities, if there was something where we could possibly look at satellites in areas to make it more viable, I think that's something that needs to be looked at, rather than just trying to put something that houses 12 people, when there's 200 or 300 we know sleeping on the streets or running around, so, yeah.
Thank you, Lilly, and that's a great point. I would say, too, when we talk about beds, everybody's not sleeping when they come to the day shelter.
Right.
Generally, it's our women. Men aren't going to stay asleep, likely. But, you know, we want to have the capacity to serve 50 or 60 people at once, you know, for them to come, and be able to wash their clothes, and do all the things that, very much like the Opportunity Hub does. I probably should have put some of those photos in the slideshow. But, you know, in terms of the county's buy-in, I think the county has a different problem than the city. The city has individual homelessness to address. The county has encampments, frankly, that they're trying to address. I am not saying by any means that this should not be a collaborative effort. I believe it should be, and I believe it will be. I've been in talks with the county about supporting this. They have some American Rescue Plan dollars that I have requested, that they put toward as much as possible to the outfit and purchase of this property, because it is in county, it's not in the city. And there are some other options there, too, with, you know, that we haven't discussed, and probably this isn't the venue to discuss it. But we are in talks with the county as well, and we do know that it is a community problem. It's not a city problem, it's not a Lorraine problem, it's not a council problem, it's a community problem. And so, I do agree that satellite places would be outstanding to have. If you go to Simpsonville, you might see five or six folks periodically. Again, the majority of folks are in Greenville, Greer, 29615, 29611. And they are, I mean, there are many encampments around, particularly Cherrydale and those places. So, I would agree. It's more than just the city, it's not just the city problem.
Lorraine, how do you, how do you counter a statement that if you build it, they will come? So if you build, you know, if you build something as described, do you then become a destination, a preferred destination for people who may be experiencing homelessness in a neighboring county, or farther, and come, you know, to take advantage of the services that become available?
I would say, there are a lot of myths when it comes to homelessness, and that's one of them. People tend to be, and particularly people with generational poverty, they're not going to Spartanburg, they're here. People who have mental illness and connected to mental health, they're not going anywhere else. They're going to stay in Spartanburg where they're connected, they're going to stay here where they're connected.
Chris, any other thoughts on that?
And I would say, too, that, again, I don't believe that's the case. I don't believe, I don't believe in the myth that if you build it, they will come. But I will flip that on the other, on its ear, and say, what if we do nothing? What do we got then? I mean, it can always be closed, it can always be, but you can't be afraid of what you don't know. I will tell you, my team will tell, will tell anyone that asks, Lorraine is fearless. And maybe that might be.
We believe that, too.
To my death.
Well, thank you very much. We're going to get to our regular agenda now, too. But thank you.
My pleasure.
We'll have further meetings on that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Do you have a motion in second on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, Court call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Regular agenda, 15A.
An ordinance to rezone 0.20 acre of real property located at 205 Wilton Street, and to rezone it, RM1, single-family and multi-residential district to OD office and institutional district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Shannon appeared to present this.
Do you want to present, do you want to go ahead and present?
Yeah, let Shannon go ahead and present.
Yes, thank you very much. This item went before Planning Commission. Megan, if we could go to the next slide, please. That's the aerial view, it's right over at the corner of Stone and Wilton. If we could go to the next slide. And really, they want to, their long-term plan is to put townhomes on the project. Staff did meet out on site with some of the surrounding neighbors concerning this project. There was no one who spoke at the public hearing, comments, or submitted a planning commission prior to the agenda item, and the Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval.
Yes, and.
Just a couple of questions.
Questions.
So, I know this is just the rezone.
Correct.
But that does kind of set the ball in motion. So it does sound like a great project, but, you know, presuming everything marches forward once you do the rezone, will the setback text amendments apply? Since now this is contiguous with residential, that's the first question.
It will, but remember, single-family attached to single-family detached. So, it will, if that's what they choose to do, it won't apply in all of the cases with all of the text amendments. However, if for some reason the use were to change, then they would apply. And so it does have some effect on the buffers.
Okay, what, and this may not apply, given what you just said, but if you go back to the previous picture, it's a lot of concrete there.
Correct.
What pervious surface requirements would apply with the rezone? In other words, wouldn't they have to be less or more pervious once they go to the new zone, or?
They will have to meet, so the zoning really doesn't have anything to do with the pervious versus impervious, where that will come into play is when they come and submit their site plan, or their subdivision plat, for whatever they choose to do. At the redevelopment of the property, they will have to meet all of our current stormwater requirements.
And isn't it a good presumption that basically we're looking at a bunch of concrete? I gotta believe with the new plan, it's going to look greener.
We anticipate there'd be more green space with the new plan, correct.
Okay, good, thanks.
And if I could just, the zoning, and y'all know how much I think zoning is fun. I'm going to keep saying that, and eventually everybody's going to believe me.
Indoctrination.
The zoning just sets forth the regulatory process, or what they can and cannot do for the property. This does not require that it be developed as a certain use or in a certain way. They can, at any point, once the property is zoned OD, they can come in and ask for a project. Now, that's what we've been told, but I always like to make sure that people know that this is not a planned development that has a tied project to it, it is just a zoning change. They will be required, though, to meet any of the requirements that are under our code when they redevelop the property. So if they do decide to move forward with single-family attached, that requires a subdivision plat, that will have to go before the Planning Commission and meet all of our subdivision requirements. If they ended up developing it as a multi-use, or a larger, you know, one project, everything on one piece of property, then that would have to meet those requirements that are set forth in the Land Management Ordinance.
Shannon, I want to thank you and staff for spending so much time with the neighbors to walk them through, because, you know, anytime something happens behind someone's house, I know, I back up the Stone Avenue, so I know the sensitivity of being adjacent to commercial. I just want to thank you so much.
Thank you.
For spending so much time. You know, it really came down to the argument that without the zone change, you could theoretically put 10 townhomes there. With the zone change, you could put 12. But the certainty of the developer and what is anticipated going there was much more attractive than tossing the dice and not providing the zoning. So when we all said, well, that's a better option than you particularly, and your team, but you particularly spent so much time with neighbors, making them feel like they are heard, but also letting them, making sure that they knew everything that's going to be required by the developer. So thank you for that very much.
Thank you very much. We pride ourselves in that, and we're, you know, we are, as our team has grown, thanks to city council giving us those positions last year, we are really trying to spend as much time as we can out in the field and working with people through the process. And, you know, we have a lot of fun trying to work with the public at large, educating them on zoning. And, you know, I'm really excited.
Because it's fun.
Because zoning is fun, see? Zoning is fun, zoning is fun. Beth is probably going to kill me right about now, because I keep saying that. Yeah, look, she's shaking her head yes, because she's terrified it's going to be a headline. But it is, I think that zoning, I just say that learning zoning can be a fun process. And we are happy to help walk people through that at any point.
Thank you. All righty, we have a motion in a second. Court call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Wasn't that fun? 15B. Next one's fun, 15B.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville, Section 19-4.1 Table of Uses and 19-4.3.3F Retail Sales and Service, to include body piercing, tattoo establishment as a use permitted by special exception at properties zoned RDB within the Village of West Greenville.
Okay, motion, second.
So moved.
Sorry, that got. Motion, second. Shannon?
Yes, sir. This was actually a recommendation to include this use out of the Village of West Greenville Micro Area Plan. And as you know, the community's perception of tattoo artists over the years have changed as we see tattooing as more of a form of artistry. And so one of our tenants within, or our builders, developers within the Village of West Greenville, has sought this text amendment. It would be something that we would be addressing in the new code, but he does have a tenant that would like to take ownership within the building this fall prior to our new code. And so staff did recommend approval of the requested text amendment. At the Planning Commission, they decided that instead of making it a permitted use, to ask for it to be recommended to you all as a special exception, and that will allow another step in the process, so that if and when an establishment comes forward, it will have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. There will be notice of, of that use, public notice will be published and sent out. And of course, then we'll have to go through a hearing and make sure that they meet all the conditions for the special use. And so that was recommended to you all from our Planning Commission, and staff supports that change.
And to be clear, it is special exception for the next one that comes up?
Yes, so if someone wanted to apply for the special exception, they would apply to our Board of Zoning Appeals. They have to meet the requirements of that special exception in order for staff to recommend approval, and in order for the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant approval. There is a public process through that, and the board is allowed to take that public testimony into consideration as part of their decision-making.
But it would never come to us?
No. This is, this is all you're going to see on it.
Any other questions? Court call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Thank you. 15C.
An ordinance rezone 0.035 acre of real property located at 1617 East North Street, from C1 to RM1.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. So moved. Shannon?
This is just a very small piece of, I mean, this is less, you know, .03 of an acre, that they are trying to rezone, and staff fully supports this change. It's in keeping with our long-range plan. It cleans up a piece of property for us, and so we fully support it.
Questions? Court call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15D, something different.
An ordinance to appropriate $35,000 in donated funds from Steve White Auto Group through Legacy Park Friends for amenities at Legacy Park.
Okay, thank you, Tara, just to present this. Let's have a motion, second, first.
Okay. So moved.
Second. Motion, second, okay, Tara?
At this time, Mayor and
Um, at this time, mayor and city council, I'd like to extend a special thank you to Steve White Auto Group, who has generously donated $35,000 for two sunshades and two picnic tables to be placed in the Legacy Park Playground area. Um, they are here today. I've- we have Mark White with Steve White Auto Group, um, Bob Bunchman, and a few of our other Legacy Park friends, and we just want to recognize them for their generous contribution.
Thank you very much, and- and thanks for the-
Coming in.
And thanks for the good deed with the Legacy Park Support Group. Thank you for all your great work. Looking great over there, thanks to that. And, um, somebody was very persuasive, I was hoping to say. No, thank you very much, uh, Mark, for that.
It's beautiful.
Uh, clerk, call, roll. This is to accept the money, I guess, of what we're doing, right, to appropriate it, to appropriate it in terms, okay?
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you very much. 15D. 15E.
An ordinance to appropriate $84,400 in miscellaneous grant fund for providing opportunities for a lifelong learning grant.
Second. Is there a second? Okay. Clerk, call, roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15F.
An ordinance to appropriate $522,708 in the miscellaneous grant fund for the sta- state-funded school resource officer program.
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
Okay. Chief?
Uh, mayor and council, to Councilwoman Fleming's point, this is money, would be money coming in for approximately $482,000, and it would add three more SRO positions to the police department. Uh, we currently have seven schools that we cover, two high schools and five middle schools, and this would cover, this is in collaboration with Greenville County School System, this grant is, and would add an SRO to West Greenville School, Sullivan Center, and Sterling School.
Okay, very good. Any questions to the chief beyond that? Clerk, call, roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 16A.
A resolution to approve an extended special assessment period for property located at 1007 Hampton Avenue.
Second. Motion, second. Um, presentation. Okay.
Yes, sir.
What's this about?
Thanks, mayor, council. Appreciate you guys giving me your time this evening. Um, so just to recap, we're going to talk a little bit about the, uh, the program is commonly referred to as the, uh, the Bailey Bill. Allows for historic and low moderate income projects to be assessed at their pre-renovation value. If certain criteria for investment are made into that project. In this instance, um, property owners did apply for a preliminary certification from the DRB of historic designation and approval rehabilitation work. Um, the first one is the Thompson Automotive one, and in that instance, um, they were approved on April 7th of 2022. Um, and- and in reference to this one, they, uh, have a p- proposed private investment of $12.5 million. The estimated post-renovation fair market value, $7.8 million. The value of the approved 10-year special assessment, um, is there at $388,000. The additional value of the extended special assessment is $429,000 for a total foregone revenue of $818,000. And in instance of this Thompson Automotive, this is also attached to the Waters Towers Crossing project, and so we're getting, um, 11 affordable, um, units out of this. There's going to be 52 total residential units, 41 are at market rate, and 11 are affordable. And in the instance of the Thompson Automotive building, it will be 30, uh, let me make sure, 370, 3,725 square feet of commercial space that they will use for commercial, uh, potential of some retail in there, but it's definitely only going to be commercial space.
Okay, very good. All- all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. 16B.
A resolution to approve an extended special assessment period for property located at 711 West Washington Street.
Um, and this one, um, is the board and ice cream plant. Um, and there, it was approved on August 5th of 2021 by the DRB for the 10-year special assessment approval. Uh, the proposed private investment's $14 million. Estimated post-renovation is $9.08 million. The value of the approved 10-year special assessment is $347,000 with the additional value of extended special assessment at $383,000 for a total foregone revenue of just over[1272.33][1272.35]$731,000. In this instance, um, they went after the federal designation for the historic, um, credit, and they- and they got that designation. Um, they plan on, uh, they're already doing the demolition inside of the building, um, and they were approved for their construction permit on March 6th, and that selective demolition has begun. They project that the completion of the core and shell renovation will be by February. This will be 40,000 square feet, plus or minus, of a post-COVID urban-style type of office space. Um, there will be no residential. There will be no restaurants. There will be no bars. There will be no clubs attached to this. It is all going to be for entrepreneurial-type office space. Um, and, um, currently, they don't have any leases, but they've got a couple already that are talking to them about this- this project as well.
This is right in front of my house.
You can see Lillian's back porch from here.
It's historical. It has been there for, and they've got the marker, and they're going to put it up. And, uh, they helped add to it, um, and to preserve this particular building. What we're excited about is that we don't have any restaurants and bars. That's been a problem over the years, but this is going to be great daytime use, office space, and a few other things. And it's going to be gorgeous if you see the sketches.
Yep.
So, um, so moved.
I do need a motion in a second.
Motion, second. Wait, you have a second, didn't we?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Very good. 16C.
A resolution to certify 21 Augusta Street as an abandoned building site.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, mayor, and, uh, council. In this instance, um, this is 21 Augusta Street. Um, Downtown Greenville Investments, um, is looking to certify the property as abandoned building site. Um, and if you'll go to the slide, oh, it didn't- it didn't make it into this one, did it? No, I apologize. There's a, uh, a slide that is an aerial that shows. So committed tenants currently at 21 Augusta Street is Jack Brown's Beer and Burger Joint. Poppy's Taco is going to be opening a second location there. The Sweet Sippin' Wine Bar and the Sweet Sippin' Speakeasy will be located in there. And then on the bottom floor of this was- this building is the Armada Law, Law Firm.
And council, it should be in your teams.
Can we have a, uh, ordinance about naming stuff? Jesus Christ, we're going way in the bit. Oh, Lord.
Good thing she's got that mask on. Tell her what- no, tell her what she'd say if you had the mask on. Go ahead. All- all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it.
Aye.
I believe that's all. We finished?
Couple- couple of quick announcements, mayor. I- I think everybody remembers back in the days, uh, like three, three and a half years ago about the Greenville Zoo and some of the challenges we had with accreditation. Uh, I'm happy to report, and I think some of you may have already seen this, but I- I want to thank Tara and her team, Bill Cooper and the entire zoo staff that did a fantastic job. The Zoo Foundation is our partners, uh, for being recognized by Travelers Choice, uh, and the TripAdvisor. It goes for accommodations, attractions, which we would fall into, that consistently earn great reviews from travelers and are ranked within the top 10% of properties on their website. Uh, I've also been told by Matt Efer that this is going to be a banner year from a revenue standpoint, best revenue year so far. So congratulations to all of your-
Huge turnaround and a great- great reflection on the city of Greenville, so thank you for that. He said, and Matt Efer said that? Okay, well, we know it's true. Got to be really good.
Uh, I- to add to the fun, the planning department is going to host an open house tomorrow, so if you want to learn more about zoning, uh, it's-
Oh, my gosh. What a fun party that will be. Horrific.
Opportunity to continue to engage with our development community and, uh, and for them to meet our staff and build those relationships. So we're looking forward to hosting that.
How many people are you expecting, Shannon? Any idea?
Thousands.
Have a good turnout.
Get there early. Get there early so you can get in.
And I just, real quick, Tara, tell us about what's planned for Monday and the 4th of July celebration.
It's back. No video.
Just a couple of other notes. We, um, opened the Prisma Health Welcome Center on Thursday, and we've already had, um, over 350 people just come in, and that was a very soft opening, so people are finding it, and, um, we're excited about that. Um, the center's hours of operation, just so you all-
The front porch has been a smash hit. We wondered when we did that, whether people would use it. All the rocking chairs, it's, there a couple times this weekend, it was 100% occupied by people enjoying themselves.
Yep, very popular. So we're open seven days a week, 10 to 6 P.M. Um, we are going to, um, start reservations, um, for our event center beginning in September. So, um, online, we'll open for online requests in August, and then September, folks can start booking that space. Our picnic shelters are going to be added to our online rental portal, um, and that's beginning July 5th. Um, and we will have two shelters that will be open for reservation, and then we'll have one that will just remain first come, first served. Um, and then our fireworks on the 4th, so we're excited about that. Uh, the event is going to begin at 6 P.M. Um, road closures, we'll have maps on the website, but those will be from 3 P.M. to 11 P.M. Um, we're working with communications. I'm really pushing out the messaging for that. Um, we have the trolley running routes as well. Um, and we'll have signage for those trolley stops and on the Swamp Rabbit Trail as well to direct boats to Unity Park. Um, the event will begin with a special performance by the 246 Army Band at 7:30, and then fireworks will begin at 9:45.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, I just- I just want to say a huge thank you to you and your staff and Angie and- and y'all, your staff. Um, I know it's a huge undertaking to do fireworks, but I'm- I'm convinced that this is going to be such a big deal for so many families and so many residents, whether they go there or they're in the shrouding areas and just, uh, you know, you- you bring joy to a lot of people with all your hard work, so thank you very much.
Is there like a big button that Councilman Dworkin can push?
We can make that happen. That's-
How's that work? I don't know.
I'm excited. I'm very excited.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
One thing I want to say, um, to, uh, Clint Link may not know this. There was a neighbor who lives in the county. He's been getting calls. He's been calling the city of Greenville for four, five years. He is right in the county. The problem is- is his neighbor in- in the city. And the city of Greenville staff came over undoubtly and corrected the- the mess and- and all the stuff, and he is just so thrilled. He said, nobody has ever in five years paid him attention. He said, but his neighborhood is comfortable now, and he actually can sit on his porch. So I just want to thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, we were hoping.
Exactly.
Well, we can just take him in. I'm sure he's excited today, so you just go over there and- He's only a few feet from the city. So I'm just saying.
Sounds like good one. Like very much, council.
6:50 P.M.
He's just so excited.